Okay, let's go ahead and get started, please. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask everybody to please silence their phones and beepers at this time. If they still have beepers.
Is that in the script or you made that up?
Good evening. This board is comprised of seven members. Four members of the board shall constitute a quorum, and the affirmative vote of four members shall be necessary for the adoption of any motion. If only four members of the board are present, an applicant may request and be entitled to a continuance to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board. If a matter is continued due to a lack of quorum, the chairperson or secretary of the board may set a special meeting to consider such a matter. In the event that four votes are not obtained, an applicant may request a continuance or allow the application to proceed to the city commission without a recommendation. Pursuant to resolution number 2021-118, the city of Coral Gables has returned to traditional in-person meetings. Accordingly, any individual wishing to provide sworn testimony shall be present physically in the city commission chambers. However, the planning and zoning board has established the ability for the public to provide comments, non-sworn and without evidentiary value, virtually. Accordingly, only individuals who wish to provide public comment in this format may appear and provide these comments via Zoom. Lobbyist registration. Any person who acts as a lobbyist pursuant to the city of Coral Gables ordinance number 2006-111 must register with the city clerk prior to engaging in lobbying activities or presentations before city staff, boards, committees, and/or city commission. A copy of the ordinance is available in the office of the city clerk. Failure to register and provide proof of registration shall prohibit your ability to present to the board. As chair, I now officially call the city of Coral Gables planning and zoning board meeting of March 9, 2020, to order. The time is 6:03. Joe, please call the roll.
Robert Behar. Alex Guzalo. Claudia Miro. Luis Revolta. Benny Torres. Chip Withers. Abi Eisenstein.
Here. I'd like to ask, Robert Behar had a medical reason that he's not here, and I'd like for him to ask the board if it's okay for him to be excused. Thank you. Notice regarding ex parte communications. Please be advised that this board is a quasi judicial board, which requires board members to disclose all ex parte communication and site visits. An ex parte communication is defined as "any contact, communication, conversation, correspondence, memorandum, or other written or verbal communication that takes place outside a public hearing between a member of the public and a member of a quasi judicial board regarding matters to be heard by the board." If anyone made any contact with a board member regarding an issue before the board, the board member must state on the record the existence of the ex parte communication and the party who originated the communication. Also, if a board member conducted a site visit specifically related to the case before the board, the board member must disclose such visit. In either case, the board member must state on the record whether the ex parte communication and/or site visit will affect the board member's ability to impartially consider the evidence to be presented during the matter. The board member should also state that his or her decision will be based on substantial competent evidence and testimony presented on the record today. Does any board member have such communication and/or site visit to disclose at this time? Swearing in. Normally, I would ask anybody in the audience, do attorneys need to be sworn in also? Okay, swearing in. Everyone who speaks this evening must complete the roster at the podium. For the record, we do not have any individuals outside of the applicant here tonight. We ask that you print clearly so the official record of your name and address will be correct.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started, please. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask everybody to please silence their phones and beepers at this time. If they still have beepers. Hold on. Is that in the script or you made that up? I made that up. Good evening. Good evening. This board is comprised of seven members. Four members of the board shall constitute a quorum, and the affirmative vote of four members shall be necessary for the adoption of any motion. If only four members of the board are present, an applicant may request and be entitled to a continuance to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board. If a matter is continued due to a lack of quorum, the chairperson or secretary of the board may set a special meeting to consider such a matter. In the event that four votes are not obtained, an applicant may request a continuance or allow the application to proceed to the city commission without a recommendation. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2021-118, the City of Coral Gables has returned to traditional in-person meetings. Accordingly, any individual wishing to provide sworn testimony shall be present physically in the city commission chambers. However, the Planning and Zoning Board has established the ability for the public to provide comments, non-sworn and without evidentiary value. Virtually, accordingly, only individuals who wish to provide public comment in this format may appear and provide these comments via Zoom. Lobbyist registration: Any person who acts as a lobbyist pursuant to the City of Coral Gables Ordinance Number 2006-11 must register with the city clerk prior to engaging in lobbying activities or presentations before its city staff, boards, committees, and/or city commission. A copy of the ordinance is available in the office of the city clerk. Failure to register and provide proof of registration shall prohibit your ability to present to the board. As Chair, I now officially call the City of Coral Gables Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of March 9, 2020, to order. The time is 6:03. Jill, please call the roll.
Robert Behar, Alex Guzalo, Claudia Miro, Luis Revolta, Benny Torres, Chip Withers, AB Isenstra.
Here. I'd like to ask, Robert Behar had a medical reason that he's not here, and I'd like for him to ask the board if it's okay for him to be excused. Thank you. Notice regarding ex parte communications. Please be advised that this board is a quasi-judicial board, which requires board members to disclose all ex parte communication and site visits. An ex parte communication is defined as any contact, communication, conversation, correspondence, memorandum, or other written or verbal communication that takes place outside a public hearing between a member of the public and a member of a quasi-judicial board regarding matters to be heard by the board. If anyone made any contact with a board member regarding an issue before the board, the board member must state on the record the existence of the ex parte communication and the party who originated the communication. Also, if a board member conducted a site visit specifically related to the case before the board, the board member must disclose such visit. In either case, the board member must state on the record whether the ex parte communication and/or site visit will affect the board member's ability to impartially consider the evidence to be presented during the matter. The board member should also state that his or her decision will be based on substantial competent evidence and testimony presented on the record today. Does any board member have such communication and/or site visit to disclose at this time? Swearing in, normally I would ask anybody in the audience, do attorneys need to be sworn in also? Okay. Swearing in, everyone who speaks this evening must complete the roster at the podium. For the record, we do not have any individuals outside of the applicant here tonight. We ask that you print clearly so the official record of your name and address will be correct. Now, with the exception of attorneys, all persons physically in the city commission chambers who will speak on agenda items before us this evening, please rise to be sworn in. Staff also, please, if you would rise. Thank you. Zoom platform participants, I will ask any person wishing to speak on tonight's agenda item to please open your chat and send a direct message to Jill Menendez stating which item you would like to speak before the board and include your full name. Jill will call you when it's your turn. I ask you to be concise for the interest of time. Phone platform participants, after Zoom platform participants are done, I will also ask phone participants to comment on tonight's agenda item. I will also ask you to be concise for the interest of time. Tonight, we do not have any approval of minutes. The procedure that we will use tonight is first the identification of agenda item by Mr. Caller, presentation by staff, then presentation by applicant or agent. I'll go ahead and open for public comment, first in chamber, then Zoom participants and the phone line participants. I will then close for public comment. We'll have board discussion, motion, any further discussion, and a second of motion if necessary. We'll have board's final comments and vote. Thank you. Mr. Caller, would you read the first item?
Thank you. By amending Appendix A Site-Specific Zoning Regulation, Section A-36, Craft Section, by removing the number of stories and height limitations for property legally described as lots 1 through 12 and lots 35 through 46, Block 10, Coral Gables Craft Section, Coral Gables, Florida, providing for repealer provisions, servability clause, codification, providing for an effective date. Item E3, in ordinance of the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida, granting approval of planned area development, PAD, pursuant to zoning code Article 14 Process, Section 14-206, general procedures for planned area development for mixed-use project referred to as Regency Tower on property legally described as lots 1 through 12 and lots 35 through 46, including the public alleyway lying in between Block 10 and lots 1 through 4, Block 15, Coral Gables Craft Section, which is 290, 272, 250, 244 Valencia Avenue, 247, 297 Almeria Avenue, and 2701 Salcedo Street, Coral Gables, Florida, including required conditions, providing for repealer provision, servability clause, and providing for an effective date. Item E4, a resolution of the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida, approving receipt of transfer of development rights, TDRs pursuant to zoning code Article 14 Process, Section 14-204.6, review and approval of use of TDRs on receiver sites for the receipt and use of TDRs for the mixed-use project referred to as Regency Tower on property legally described as lots 1 through 12 and lots 35 through 46, including the public alleyway lying in between Block 10, Coral Gables Craft Section, Coral Gables, Florida, including required conditions, providing for repealer provisions, servability clause, and providing for an effective date. Item E5, a resolution of the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida, granting approval for conditional use mixed-use site plan pursuant to zoning code Section 2-200, mixed-use districts for mixed-use project referred to as Regency Towers on property legally described as lots 1 through 12 and lots 35 through 46, including the public alleyway lying in between Block 10 and lots 1 through 4, Block 15, Coral Gables Craft Section, Coral Gables, Florida, including required conditions, providing for repealer provisions, servability clause, and providing for an effective date. Items E1 through E5, public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I have the PowerPoint, please? The Regency Tower, as the city attorney explained so clearly, has five requests. This is fairly typical of these large mixed-use projects. There are multiple things that need to be done, and I'll try to explain them briefly, and then the applicant has a more extensive presentation for you. The site includes about half of the block that is, I'm sorry, bound by Salcedo, Valencia, and Almeria, and then another parcel that is on the other side of Almeria. So, the whole area is within the pad, and the building, the mixed-use building, is in the northern half of that parcel, and then the small parcel south of Almeria is to be a park. That is, in general, the concept. Now, in terms of the future land use and the zoning, they are MX2 and MX3, and the future land use is properly designated also for this type of project. The alley vacation, as you can see, the gray area has been vacated, and then the blue is an alternative design for the circulation, and the yellow remains as an alley. There's also in this area, as you all know, a site specific that limits the number of stories and the height. This project is a PAD, and is designed to be 18 stories and 204 feet high and 6 inches. You got a chance to review the amendment to the zoning code and the complan that dealt with those issues last time, and this is the project that could take advantage of that, one of the projects that could take advantage of that amendment. So, the elimination of that site specific would allow the 18 stories and 204 feet in this site. The PAD, as you well know, requires one acre. They have more than an acre. It requires 200 feet of width, 100 feet of depth, and one of the benefits is that it requires additional open space. So, that is one of the reasons why the applicant is proposing a park, plus many improvements on the sidewalk that include landscape, et cetera, and they'll explain that in detail. Request number three is the TDR, transfer of development rights, and by that, the practical effect of that is that the FAR of the project can go up to 4.375. There's some minor issues that are not completely resolved yet because that applies to the area in the central business district, and there's a small area, as I said before, that is outside of the central business district, but I believe that that can be resolved prior to first reading by commission. The request, the other request that we have is the conditional use for the site plan, which deals with the design issues, and as you can see at the ground level, there's a courtyard in the building, there's a landscape along the sidewalks, there's that park in the lower area of the image. So, there are many, many very good, very interesting features from an urban design point of view that the applicant will explain in more detail. The site plan information shows you that the project is less than 100 or is 100 units per acre as allowed by the proposed language and the new zoning code, and parking is provided under 18 stories in height. The conceptual renderings are here for your information. The project was reviewed by the Board of Architects and was awarded the Met Bonus Level 2, and the review timeline included the DRC in October, Board of Architects multiple times, as most projects this size do, the neighborhood meeting that is required, and planning zoning tonight. Letters were sent to property owners within 1,000 feet twice, and there were three postings of the property, and three website postings, and one newspaper advertisement. Staff recommends approval with conditions, and after the presentation, we could discuss them in some detail.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Joe Jimenez, Executive Vice President and General Counsel for Codina Partners, address at 2020 Salcedo Street here in Coral Gables. First of all, I'd like to thank you for having me here. I know that I've been before you on a different item that didn't pertain specifically to me, but that we've always been open about us intending to apply under, and that is the ordinance that you considered the last time you met and that Ramon mentioned today. So, if I could please have the PowerPoint that we provided, I'll take you through a brief presentation and obviously hear for any questions. In order to fully understand this project, I think it's important to understand the history of the project. This is not a standalone building that just came up with an idea and everything else. This is a years-long process between three different property owners, including the city, that involves four different properties throughout downtown. Those four properties are put here. The Sofia 2020 Salcedo, which you see on the left of the screen, is our current building, and it is the end, the north end, of the central business district. It's a mixed-use development with an office building and an apartment building, restaurants, and office on the ground floor. At the time that we built that, we had, we owned the lot catty-cornered to us, and that wound up in a swap with the city for the public safety building as it used to exist in order to build the new public safety building, and then Mercedes got involved. So, why the swap? And I'll let you know, as we started, this was the site that we originally controlled just to the west, excuse me, just to the east of the Sofia. We had fully intended to build basically a Phase 2 to the Sofia, fewer units to fit on that site, but that we could co-manage with the Sofia, making it perfect, share amenities, share management. It was just a good business deal. Right there, as you can see, to the south of it was the L at-grade parking lot that the city owned. This was going to be our plan, surrounded by the city parking lot at grade. It was a permit lot used for the surrounding businesses to park their employees and anybody else who wanted a monthly parking. So, the city came to us and said, hey, listen, if we combine our lots, we can square this off, build a new public safety building, and build a new needed municipal parking garage on what you see as the non-rectangular piece of that site. I think you all know what happened eventually. Now, you have the public safety. It's catty-cornered our office. We traded. We were going to get the public safety building. City was able to stay in the old public safety building all the while because it's impossible to move all of that, considering Public Works is outside the city of Coral Gables, emergency management, and everybody else was never going to be able to stay. We said, build it, go ahead. We stayed there. We struck a deal. We traded essentially and waited for them to finish. In the meantime, since we knew we were going to acquire this, we were approached by Mercedes. Now, you don't, this doesn't require your memory. You know it now. The at-grade Mercedes used car lot is a very intense use. They've been there for, I think it's 50, 60 years, and between the deliveries and the cars being parked and everything else, it was just, it was a very intense use. There's no parking on that site, so the employees are parking all over the neighborhood, and Mercedes wanted to be a good corporate neighbor and said, wow, this is actually a perfect solution because what we can do is, you guys are going to tear this building down. It's got a 400-car garage. It's got what we can turn into a showroom. It's got everything we need to have a better facility for our site, so why don't we downtrade? So, even before we acquired the public safety building, we enter into a deal with Mercedes to trade. Now, they own this, and this is what they planned to do. This is what they're in for the city. So, now, it's a second site, not only the at-grade lot that the city put its public safety building on, but now another building that is refurbished and beautifying downtown Coral Gables. So, now, as the can keeps getting kicked down the road, we wind up with the current Mercedes used car lot. These are the two lots in comparison to each other, so we move a couple blocks to the north. As Ramon said, now we are inside the CBD. It also comes with that little lot on Almeria, which has currently a 1,200-square-foot little office building surrounded by at-grade parking of about maybe 10 or 11 cars. This is where we were proposing the Regency Tower that Ramon took you through. The reason that I bring all of this up is because especially to a planning board, I think it's important for the history to be, this is not one project that we think does improve downtown Coral Gables. There's about three projects that have objectively speaking, at least the other two, improved Coral Gables. You have a decades-long corporate citizen that is now reinvesting in the site and beautifying a headquarters. You have a vastly upgraded municipal emergency management, emergency services building, public safety building, and now we hope to provide a use that quite frankly does not exist in Coral Gables, to my knowledge, does not exist in Miami-Dade County. So, Ramon took you through why we're here. I'm not going to, some of it is extraordinarily simple. The site consists of 1.74 acres. It is up to 174 units. I will tell you now, that is for an entitlement purpose. I think our last site plan put us at about 145, 150. There's over 20,000 square feet of open space in the courtyard, the loggia's, and obviously the park across the street. We intend to have world-class dining, and all I ask you is to look at our track record. Antonio Bussor is established as the greatest pastry chef in the world. Armando Codina, I'd be remiss if I didn't repeat his joke that he chased Antonio Bussor more than he chased his wife. So, he intends to chase equally, and we've got somebody that we're already talking to for world-class dining commensurate with this building, and as our public benefit, we worked with Mercedes to acquire this lot, and upon approval, this will be dedicated as a 10,000-square-foot municipal urban pocket park, which I will tell you, I lived in the Sofia for four years. I have two young daughters who were younger when I lived there, and I would have really enjoyed a pocket park because if it wasn't for the lot on Minorca and Salcedo, that's, excuse me, Mallorca and Salcedo, which is private property, and luckily, nobody presses charges, that's where I could play frisbee with my kids and throw it around and let the dog run around. So, this, I personally believe, and I would have benefited from it myself, is an excellent amenity to downtown, and I hope to see more of this come around as more residents move into the area. As Ramon mentioned, the alley is, it's a simple request. It's happened throughout downtown Coral Gables. It runs straight through. What this does not show you is that this alley on the east side tees behind Anthony's Coal Fire and Canton, so it runs east-west as you see, but then the means of egress and ingress are going north and south to Valencia and Almeria. We propose to bring it, to vacate it, the west portion of it, grant the city an easement to turn it to the north, and exit onto Valencia. The open space is well-established. We far exceed everything that We far exceed everything that the city code requires. Obviously, a lot of that has to do with the park, but that is not the only thing that we are relying on. Our courtyard, if you are familiar with the building at Sofia, this courtyard is approximately twice the size. Maybe a little less, but right in that ballpark, there's plenty of more, much more green space on the on the west side of this building than there is at the Sofia or twenty twenty Salzado. And all of this, we would like, admit it, just to show compliance with the with the zoning code. Our ground floor plan for our mixed use, down at the bottom of that screen in the bottom left-hand corner, we have approximately a five-thousand-square-foot restaurant. As you move north, we have a co-working space that can be used by both the residents of the building and any guests that come in from the outside. The entrance, as you go further north, some inner office, in inner building logistical areas, and then about roughly fifteen-hundred-square-foot office on the corner of Valencia and Salzado. I'm sorry. As you go along Almeria, the valet car court is there with a valet holding area, which will, that we intend to be one of the entrances to the restaurant. We would keep all of that internalized. As you see the alley coming in from the right of your screen, from the east to the west, the loading dock is also internalized to allow services to the building to not affect neighboring streets and then then continue north and exit onto Valencia. Just the floor plans, and I'll take you through them very briefly. The second, the mezzanine is nothing but storage lockers and and the garage. This is purposefully intended for the style of unit that we're going for, which I'll take you more through later. We do feel that storage will be an important, an important amenity to these residents. There's tipicals two through six, as you can see, on the same level as the garage as the floors go. The courtyard opens to below for those units facing the interior of the building. Once you get to the pool deck, we have two pools, a lap pool and a regular pool. Cabanas throughout, green space, as well as a fitness center and a clubhouse on the pool deck. As you go up to tower eight through thirteen, again, much larger units than than are currently on the market. To put it in perspective, the Sofia has an average nine-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot unit in its two-hundred-and-some-odd units. The lar, the smallest unit in this building is in the neighborhood of thirteen-hundred feet. The largest being in the neighborhood of about ten thousand square feet. As we go up to the the higher floors, as the last floor of the step backs, these two patios here would have above-ground gardens, would have a yoga, a yoga area, outdoor barbecues, a zen garden, and other amenities for, that would, that would service the higher floors, starting at floor fourteen. Fifteen through seventeen, fourteen through the penthouse are what we call the sky homes. At the moment, and as I told you, we are asking for one hundred and seventy-four units. That is very much up to one hundred and seventy-four. At the moment, some of these floors, at at least one of them for sure, and probably two, aside from the penthouse, will be one unit per floor. So that floor plate is in the neighborhood of ten, eleven thousand square feet. The goal of this building, and this is why I was saying I didn't, I don't think hyperbolically, that this isn't something found. When we talk about rights, rightsizing, how we're putting it, is what some people mistakenly, I think, call downsizing. If you have an eight, ten, nine-thousand-square-foot house on an acre and a half on the water, you're not moving into a thirteen-hundred-square-foot apartment. I lived in a thirteen-hundred-square-foot apartment. I loved it. I didn't have that house. If we can get these people to get out of those homes that they may no longer need, the kids are gone, advancing in age, and get into, this is a rental building, this is not a condo. This will be professionally managed. This is not going to be managed by by condo association with potential conflicts and everything else. This is a professionally managed building. That's something that now it's a rights. It's something that you do see in other cities. It's something you see in cities like New York, where you have the large penthouses, you have the larger units that I'm simply not aware of here to this level, and certainly not in a rental, in a rental market. And then obviously, the penthouse being the last floor, and I think that plate, that plate is about eight thousand square feet with balconies on both sides. Again, you've seen the renderings of the building. We've addressed the issues as Ramon mentioned. We have gotten approval from the Board of Architects, not only for our, the Mediterranean bonuses, but also for design. A lot of that, a lot of the changes that they had us, that they had us do are here, and we sincerely believe that a lot of those comments made it a better project. From the front, from the street, to show the activation, this is looking to the north along the the logia on Salzado. That would be the restaurant. Looking to the south, the interruption that you see is the lobby going in, the logia goes around it. And the passeo on the east side of the building, looking from both, looking both to the north and the south. The image that you see on the left of your screen, that the reason there's a dog there is because that would be a dog spa for the building, not a retail dog spa, would be one managed by the building. So we're able to not only put in a covered passeo, but actually be able to activate it as well with building amenities that would also be available to the general public. And I took you through that just in in respect for your time, but I know that this board typically is is engaged and has questions, so obviously, I'm happy to answer any that you may.
What I wanted to do is just, Joe, let me ask you a question. How many people do we have on Zoom that want to speak?
We have two, but they haven't indicated they, they, we have two, but they haven't indicated they wish to speak.
Okay, let's go ahead and wait a little bit then to close. So does anybody have any questions? Could, could you turn your mic?
So how does the the park swap work? Obviously, that's counted in that twenty-five percent TAD requirement.
It's it's not a swap. It's not a swap. It's 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 a gift.
I'm sorry. Either way, I don't care who answers, I don't, so. Because you mentioned that, I thought you said that it helped with the with compliance on the green space.
I, if, it does help with compliance on the green space. A pad under the city code is permitted to have multiple ownership.
Right.
So that that park is part of the pad.
Right.
And we will deed it to the city to be managed municipally, programmed municipally. It will just always be deed restricted to be part of the pad.
So Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Withers, the condition of approval will have to be updated more clearly.
Okay, that was my question. Okay, I got that squared away. Okay, so that's how, so the city will, there'll be some kind of deed restricting, unless the city releases you from that requirement, that park will belong to the city, but it'll be controlled because it's inside the pad by some kind of warranty deed or.
To 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 put it on the record, Mr. Withers, the 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 Mercedes, the Usri family and their, and the current Mercedes ownership are the ones that sold us that site on the condition that it be deed restricted for a park. So it's not something that we can even restrict. They want it, they're happy to, they're happy to donate something to the city.
Okay, so that was, that was part of that deal, okay.
It's a park.
So have we ever looked at making Valencia two ways instead of one way?
Some of us have, yes.
I mean, does it make sense? I mean, is that, is that develops?
I believe it does, but it takes some, some, some studying to to implement it, yes. The the long-term vision should be two-way everywhere.
Because it keeps people, because otherwise you're going Anluzia, you're just making a loop to get around. I think it creates more traffic probably on Salzado and on Ponce, I'm guessing.
That's a very good point, yes.
Yeah, that's, I was just.
Not part of my application, but I understand.
Jill, is there anybody that wants to speak tonight for this item?
No, they have not requested to speak.
So having nobody, we don't have anybody in chambers that wants to speak. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close it for public comment, open it up to the board.
I've had a couple of questions, just just to understand a little bit more. So I'm happy with your project, and I think it's a great asset, and I appreciate what you've done. It's really well done. A couple of things, just to make sure that the future, and I know you have it all figured out. One thing, the the dog spa, as you walk through, is this for amenity to the building or is it for lease to the public, the the dog spa?
The the plan right now is to have sort of like an amenity to the building that also takes clients. And as as this board is much more aware than I am, sometimes you come in here with aspirational goals and the market simply doesn't allow it. So that is the plan now, because we do want to provide, in, we've done, we've done dog spa areas in in less luxurious buildings, for lack of a better word, I'm sorry. That's sort of a do-it-yourself. Here, we'd like to maybe almost provide it at a cost to the residents, but also be able to supplement that with with service to to the public in general for certain services. It's a goal, which is why we've activated it somewhat. Someone, in working with Ramon at the beginning of this process, we wanted to try to activate that anyway. There wasn't the space to do it fronting Almeria. So we were able to sort of do it that way, sort of the way that the breezeway between the garage and Miracle Mile, where the mobility hub is going to go, is sort of activated, you know, that that barber shop that used to be there and few other things that have been in there, but not something that requires constant pedestrian traffic because you're probably not going to get.
And the area in front looks like a double, it's like a ramp, double ramp. What what is the purpose of that particular slot?
It's the ramp into the garage.
Into?
It's the garage.
That goes down?
The the.
Or it goes up? The the one in front of the dog spa is the ramp? It looks like.
If if you turn it, I'll, I'm sorry, since it isn't on the screen.
Yeah, this is. Couldn't figure that one out.
Jill, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'd like to make a note that Mr. Revuelta has joined us.
It's noted.
Thank you.
Probably be the simplest question of the night. In regards to parking for the restaurant, is it simply valet? Is there guest parking, simply valet?
Yes, it would be valet, which is why we wanted to do such such a large valet area internalized, that not only could it stack around that circle, but we put parking in there just in case valet is busy. They can store, store and avoid the queue to come out onto Almeria. So because that's, we noticed that that was an issue when we had valet at Bussure, that it was just that three parking space ramp. This would be, this would be able to hold ten, twelve, thirteen cars.
Vinnie, were you done?
I have one more question. So so the areas in the Valencia side that are, I guess, amenities, theater, libraries, zoom rooms, could those are, I'm sure you have these as amenities, as I described? Could these be in the future turned the other way to become activated as cafes or anything? Or is that something you really not want to do?
It it absolutely could, and obviously, the market's going to dictate a lot of things. In our, in our current office building, for example, we have an office that goes the entire length of the ground floor, almost along west on Menorca. There's one entrance to that, and then it's window, 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 window. It satisfies your office, it's all office. We would design this so that the pedestrian experience feels like that would be what it is if, but we are planning certain doors, both so that if nobody's using that theater because they've got a big enough TV upstairs, like a lot of people do or whatever, hey, maybe it's, maybe it is a way to 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 activate the space more. But from the pedestrian point of view, there would be no difference if that were full-on office as opposed to, as opposed to resident amenity.
Vinnie, are you?
That's it, thank you.
Yeah, I do. So I'm in the transportation business, and I'm trying to figure out how you're going to get anything larger than a box truck into the loading dock area. I mean, you're not going to be able to get tractor-trailers or?
Well, we don't to.
And people move in and out or taking deliveries and?
No, a moving truck, a moving truck could, and I, and to, again, having lived in the Sofia myself and been there on weekends and been there during the week, because I also work in the building, that loading dock doesn't hold a tractor-trailer either.
No, no, I'm figuring out how, what's the access? How do you get into that? You come off of Valencia?
Into the loading dock? You would come in from the alley, and then as you are going out to Valencia, you would back it out. But you're right, a tractor-trailer would never get in.
No, it's not going to make, so the alley is going to come off of, you're saying you're going to come down the alley with a with a truck?
I wouldn't, I, tractor-trailers, tractor-trailers don't go down alleys in Coral Gables usually, in my experience. But a box truck and and moving trucks? Because, and and I can tell you that the loading dock at the Sofia is actually lower than if you bring in too big a moving truck, it won't, it won't fit. The the auto turn that we've run here, that the Public Works has been very diligent in making sure that this is a functioning alley. And remember something, the alley on the other side is actually, I think, ours on the west side, the one that we're proposing, is actually easier to get in and out of than the existing alley on the east side that tees, because it doesn't go straight out to Ponce. This alley tees. So the condition also lends itself to maybe a little bit smaller truck, because they can't get in any.
No, it it shows, it shows a twenty-five-foot truck. I guess, how big are the, how big are, how big are the waste management trucks that get in there? Do we know?
These are specifically, this alley is specifically designed and approved by Public Works to accommodate both fire engine and waste management truck. That's, those are their, those are their standards.
Looking at the resident trash, is that, is that where the the dumpsters are going to be?
Yes, the 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 waste management truck would go into the loading dock, yes.
And so where is the dumpster going to be located in in where the? I mean, it's great that it's all interior, and you're not going to hear the clanging and the banging and the beeping and stuff like that. But I'm just curious to know where the, where the actual dumpsters are located.
Sure, so.
Are these all these little white things, the dumpsters?
Yes, yes, so that little yellow room and those two gray rooms that are directly west of the.
I'm looking at A three, which one are you looking at?
Yeah, I'm looking at A three as well. So if you go directly west, if you're, if you were a parked truck in the loading dock, directly west of that, you'll see, you'll see two rooms.
Right.
That's the dump. That's the garbage.
Okay, so all those, are those little white things the dumpsters?
Yes.
Okay, so to get to that, you have to take them out of the, out of that door and across that surface and then onto the loading dock, right?
Yes.
So you're really not going to have any kind of big trash compactor in there? You're just going to have.
Those, there, we have a compactor, that's the bottom of the chute. It compacts, and then it gets rolled up.
Okay.
That's how we operate our our current building.
So so the deliveries for the for the restaurant and the other amenity areas are going to be by the central loading dock here?
It would be there, and then if you see, there's a hallway that runs essentially completely down the middle, north to south. That is a covered and blocked hallway, and that would go straight to the back of the restaurant.
So that trash chute at the other service corridor, I guess they're going to wheel the dumpsters down that service corridor to pick them up, I guess, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How about folks that want to be dropped off on Salzado to come through the foyer entrance there?
Well, we are proposing, and there's a back and forth. We would like to recreate the condition on Salzado on this block that exists every block to the south and many, many blocks to the to the north, including across the street. Right now, Salzado on this block is the first time that Salzado northbound is two lanes.
Right in front of the post office there.
Before.
I understand, I know what you're talking about.
So, because you have.
I know, I'm following you.
Right, so what we would like to do is take that second lane.
And and make it a.
And make it bulb-outs, green space, street beautification, and parking spaces. We do not want it for our building.
I mean, that sounds reasonable, I don't know how that city feels.
Which sounds reasonable, and and the final design has to be prepared, it hasn't been done yet, so.
So we are in discussion with Public Works about it. Because a traffic study is not required for this project, because we are not increasing our peak trips by fifty, we do, they may very well want a traffic study to show that this can work, given that it's one street that goes for two blocks.
You can make recommendations on that, and I think it will be helpful, because the the final design is still.
It just seems practical to me.
Sure.
These are bulb-outs you show here now? You show them now?
We do, we show them, we we show.
The way I would describe them is that they are placeholder, and the final design is still being worked out. So any any recommendations, any ideas that you have, I think now is the time.
Last question, so how does the valet park the car? I'm assuming you drop in the drop-off area, right?
It would be, it would be. It would be, it would be a left onto Almeria and a left back into the building.
Be a left on Almeria.
So once you come out of that circle to the south.
And then another, then another?
A left and a left.
So you're going across, I got you, and then left into the parking garage where Vinnie was talking about.
If if Valencia or whatever become two ways and traffic were to increase, they would go around the block.
Yeah, yeah, got it. Okay.
But.
It's it's a nice project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chip. Uh, Claudia?
My question was also on on parking, and thank you for asking the follow-up valet question. So how many, how many units do you have in this building?
Um, we are asking for approval of up to one hundred and seventy-four. We are probably gonna wind up at south of one fifty.
And you imagine how many parking spaces per unit would be allocated?
There's at least two, but we're way overparked here from required.
Sorry?
There's at least two, but we are incredibly overparked here from required because then we have the valet. Give me the exact count, and I'll let you know exactly how many.
There were three hundred and eighty-nine.
And guests for the residents would also valet, or do they have their own?
Guests for the residents would valet. This would be, we would like to keep that garage secure, so it would be, it would be valid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question? Mr. Coler, could you, since this is a quasi judicial um meeting and Louis came late, could you give an explanation to the board as to what the procedure would be and so forth at this time, please?
Yes, I've already advised the member that he, because he wasn't here from the beginning of the hearing. Because this is quasi judicial, that he he can't participate in this. In this hearing and vote on it, and he understands that. That is different from had this been a legislative item. Then you're not, then you don't have the same requirements, but in a quasi judicial item, which this is, you do, you do. Have to be here from the beginning of the hearing, the beginning of the testimony.
When you say he can't participate, can he ask questions? Can I ask, call upon him?
Actually spoke with the city attorney and and her, she says he really should not participate or in any way influence the the proceedings.
And the last question on that for me is, seeing as he is the only architect here today, if any of us have any questions, then we cannot ask him?
I think you have to rely on your own knowledge and and. And within the members of the board. Well, I I think the preference is that you, that that you not participate in it, since you weren't here from the beginning. Obviously, the rest of the agenda and some of the items on the rest of the agenda are purely legislative. Had we done those first, then it wouldn't have been a problem, but.
So in that case, does he need to be excused from the meeting?
Well, he doesn't have a conflict, so he doesn't need to be excused. But I've spoken with the city attorney and she says the member should not participate.
Okay, it's the first time that I've seen it, and that's why I'm asking.
Right, and so I had reminded you, in case this occurs in the future, if we have a situation where we have a quasi judicial hearing. And it gets continued over to the next meeting, and one of the, one of you were not here, you need to read the transcript. So that at the next meeting, I will ask you, did you have an opportunity to read the transcript? Hopefully, you will say yes, and I'll say, then you can participate. Because you've, you were, although you weren't present at that meeting, you did read the entire transcript and can participate, and we've actually had this happen. At the board from time to time.
Is it appropriate if I ask you a question?
A general question not relating to this item? Sure.
It's a joke. This is the one hundred and five feet, six and a half inches, totally, right?
Okay.
Thank you. Um. You're good. Um, a couple of questions.
I just wanted to ask one more question that just came to mind. I know that you mentioned earlier that the smallest unit was gonna be about roughly nine hundred square feet.
The average unit in the Sofia is nine fifty. The smallest unit here is in the neighborhood of twelve to thirteen hundred.
Twelve to thirteen hundred, and the largest you said was ten thousand.
Yeah, approximately.
I have one final question.
Sure.
After you.
Go ahead, Vinnie.
Okay. My 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 thought is that, one suggestion, and you may have thought about it, is if you can provide a grease trap for the north side, including, you know, even that corner. In the future, things change, and then you don't have to come back. We're doing that on another property. So I like to see this activation happen in the future. As things progress, you may wanna do it.
And the way that we have it here is that our grease trap is actually in the loading dock, so it actually wouldn't be hard to run a grease trap to that site and then have it. Come out of the loading dock, which is probably we're gonna, we're gonna run this one anyway. So I will bring it up because it actually, you never know.
Better now than never.
You never know, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna put a grease trap in later. So thank you, that's actually.
A couple of questions, comments and so forth. Um, when we were here for this area, we did go to two oh five six.
Yes, sir.
What I'm seeing this come in at the project to the top is two thirty-nine eight. I understand that the tower is the difference. But we're now at two hundred and thirty-nine eight inches. Can you explain how that's okay based on what we did?
Uh, yes, sir. The the height in the downtown is measured to the top of the habitable floor. So what happens is that the top of the habitable floor is two two hundred and four six inches. In addition, the Met Bonus allows non-habitable decorative towers and other features. So so that's a lot already. And the height is not unusual, actually, what was being proposed.
I I think when we were discussing this, actually, one of the statements, if I recall, that I made or a question we made was when we were doing the, there was discussion between two hundred feet. Two hundred and five feet, six inches and so forth, and the five feet didn't make a difference. But I think there was a question that was raised at some point was, that includes all the bonuses, the towers and so forth, and my understanding or my impression was that it did.
Uh, no, sir. That that was simply the the habitable. Maybe that wasn't explained clearly enough, but.
Okay.
And unless Ramon corrects me, even without that ordinance, this tower doesn't even come close to the tallest tower in in downtown. So we could do this tower without that ordinance. It was the the habitable space that we went with.
Um, the.
Right.
The other question that I have is. For me, having served a long time at different interns on the board, this is actually the first project that I'm seeing with a garage that's on the side. As opposed to a pedestal.
The Sofia was the same, and you were at the board.
In this type? I didn't, it didn't stand out like this does to me.
Same developer, by the way, same same developer. Our, the 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 east elevation, the east elevation of this building is actually nicer. I'm I'm sorry to the current owners of the Sofia, I don't mean to insult your building, because we've sold that building, but when we went to the Board of Architects, we went with essentially our same. East elevation for that, in that case, it's the west elevation, and they had us do more, more work to it, but that garage runs from. Navari to Menorca, right up against the hotel parking. It's it's an almost identical.
But it's a very good observation. It's a very good feature, very unusual.
Yeah. Can you talk about how you're doing your protection, in other words, not to see the garage or to make it blend in more?
Yes, and we've, we've, that was also one of the comments from the Board of Architects, and I think that screen will be evolving.
Okay.
We, we've gone to the Board of Architects three times. The first, let's not count the first time because there was a miscommunication there, but the second time. They brought up the screening. We worked on it. We came back. We showed them different examples of screens that we liked. And screens that we were gonna try to emulate, and as you all are more aware than me, the Board of Architects is an evolving. As we finalize that plan, they will go approving or disapproving, but we have a general approval for what we're looking to do. Based on things that have already been done elsewhere and our rendering.
Also, just to comment on the Mediterranean bonuses, this is actually one of the first times that I've seen a building that doesn't have any tile on the roof or so forth. To me, I like that because it makes no sense, as the discussion that we've had, to put tile at two hundred feet or to put tile at a hundred and ninety feet. So, but but I just think that that process needs to be carried throughout the city in all projects. Not just, you know, one project or two projects.
Sure, and I'm glad you mentioned that because so far, knock wood, the only, only. Opposition that we've had to this is one person who submitted a letter to the Board of Architects saying this was a Mediterranean. And if you look through the Mediterranean code and you don't, I I. I'm sorry, Mr. Choaeta is not able to participate and Mr. Behar isn't here because architects are. Um, valuable to it, but there is a Board of Architects, but the code allows Mediterranean bonus, given the objective. Meeting of certain criteria. And there's a cheap way to meet that criteria, and there's a not cheap way to meet that criteria, and sometimes it doesn't go. For example, it also doesn't give you bonus points for exceeding the minimum criteria with, let's say, pavers or natural stone, which this building so does. So that just was not the way we chose to do it. You don't have to meet them all. You have to meet a certain number of a certain number, and that was not because we agree with you. So, but I do wanna address that, that just because you don't do what everybody else did, doesn't mean you didn't legally meet it, and we did.
That's a comment I wanted to make, so it's on the record. Um, did you look when designing this building at trying to step back at certain points? For the building from the sidewalk or from the main street as opposed to going vertical, or how did you come to the determination?
We, we, we did, and we, we went with what the code suggested. It's not, the step backs aren't as pronounced in the front, but. The way we looked at it was there is a huge step back from when you get out of your car or when you're walking, there's not only the sidewalk, there's the arcade. And we can point you to our building. So at that level, where there's a covered arcade right at street level, as you get out of your car, as you're walking down the street. You're not gonna notice the rest of that. It was our opinion. So we took it in. At the most impactful place for the people that are gonna be there. So as you see it from a distance where the building literally does, and there isn't one up there. But if you look at it from either the north or the south, it obviously, it obviously moves as as.
Correct, but not, not, what I'm talking about is other projects or other buildings that are gonna be built eventually around there. They're not gonna see that step back or that setback, and I'm I'm looking more at that.
Uh, understood, and if you, and if I had that presentation, I would show it to you, there is a lot more. Step back there than you initially see in these renderings because it was exhaustively discussed at at the Board of Architects because there is that. And my associate is an architect, so she can tell me the word. What is it? So, yes, so, and I'm happy to admit it into the record if you like, but if you see the different colors and. And I will admit it into the record, but if anybody wants to see the video and see it, and it's part of the middle.
It is part of the record, sir.
A three point three two.
That was there, yes.
So it does, there there is. That was taken into consideration from a, from a general, I'm sorry to whoever's running the camera that I had it up. Now they zoomed in on me. It may be subtle, but it is there, and from a distance.
I I would have liked to see it more from the the front part.
Okay, and. That is something that we will have to, okay, and and whether that could be done with, whatever, thank you.
The other question, the FAR that you're, that you are getting on this is, is what?
Well, it's four point three seven five, uh, as proposed by the applicant. We're still. Working on the, on the final details, but it's nothing beyond, beyond what's reasonable in this area.
So. What is it? Three point five plus TDRs?
Yes, sir.
Is that the way you would?
When you, when the maximum allowed TDRs takes you, it's twenty-five percent of allowed FAR with bonus, which equals point eight seven five, which equals four point three seven five.
And and the alley that's being vacated. How much FAR are you getting based on that vacation of the alley? Do you have a calculation for that, Ramon?
Don't, the applicant probably does, or I I.
I don't know the exact square footage of the alley being vacated.
Staff is gonna look into it.
So six thousand times.
Comes forward. Chip, did you have a comment?
Six thousand times four point three seven five.
So you're getting an additional twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet based on the vacating of the alley?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So. What benefit does the city get? I understand they've got the park across the street now that. Does the park across the street allow you to have more FAR in your building because of it, or it has nothing to do with it at all?
Yes.
It is part of the PAD project, so all that is used, yes, sir, yes, sir.
So that's used into this building?
It is.
And how many square feet are you getting based on the FAR? That's a ten thousand square foot lot?
Depending on the final interpretation, anywhere between thirty-five and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
Okay.
So that that is the the only issue that is still being discussed in detail. I don't think it's significant enough for you to to worry about the the approval.
Okay, um, so what you're saying is that this site plan can change?
Slightly, slightly. It it, there's a very minor discussion that is going on. I think we're talking about what, five?
Yeah, but it wouldn't change with respect to the alley curb cuts, facade design. None of that would change.
I mean, in terms of the mass and in terms of the design, in terms of any of that, that wouldn't change, no.
You're talking about interior floor plans that we'd have to get rid of, get rid of some FAR?
And you mentioned, you made a note of it to say that it's a rental building.
It is.
Does, is that better as opposed to a condo, or I'm I'm just curious why, I'm not asking the business sense of it, I'm just asking, how does that? Make a difference in the project, if it's a rental building or if it's a condo project?
And let me be careful here because I don't wanna, I I don't wanna misspeak. I'll start with Armando's joke. The only thing worse than living in a building you built is living in a condo building you built, because you've got a few hundred owners and. And to the darkest part of what this becomes is people don't necessarily vote in the best interest of the building, they vote in the best interest of themselves. Things are not maintained. We all know where, I I think you know where I might be going with this. There are a lot of exit ramps in between the tragedy that occurred in Sunrise and badly maintained buildings where the condo association simply doesn't pay the landscaper, doesn't do this. A professionally managed building doesn't have that, doesn't have that, um, that conflict. It's, when you have a vacancy, you wanna make sure the place is pretty because you wanna make sure, and they're spending the money that they collect, and they're paying their taxes, and they're doing everything else. And it's professionally managed, not politically managed sometimes. There are very good condo boards, there are some bad ones, and there are mediocre ones. So that's why we think, in our experience, and given the market as it is today, if you're going to downsize, right size, out of a. Two, three, four, five, ten, twelve million dollar house. Put that money in your estate, you deal with your estate planning, you rent, and you never have to deal with anything again. It's a lifestyle choice, one that I used to live before I got remarried. I I enjoyed it because it was very easy, there were no responsibilities, and it was a nice way to be. It's a choice, and it's a choice that's provided. And when you wanna leave, you leave. Your lease runs out and and you're gone.
But whether it's a rental or a condo, it doesn't affect any of our decisions.
It doesn't affect any of your decisions. I was saying it just to say.
That's what I wanted to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, to me, the main thing is that it's going to two hundred and thirty-nine feet. You know, when I looked, when I looked at these plans, and I will tell you that when I got this, this was the first time I've seen the project. I had not seen this project before. And I've seen some buildings that were built that the board approved. And I will be very specific, it's where the deal for it is, for example, that project that's built there.
It's a gay bus station, you're thinking?
Uh, it's where the living.
Yeah.
Whatever it's called.
That that, that's the name that it was.
And that thing is just not right for me. I think I actually voted against it, but either way, that that building's just not right for me. A concern I have is, the discussion that we had was at two hundred and five feet. Mr. Codina is a great developer. The park is great. There's, it's, there's nothing wrong with it. Just taking that about forty feet, it's less than forty feet, it could be thirty-five feet, having that feature to me. You're going past what we spoke about at the meeting where we said, all right, we're gonna cap at two oh five six or whatever it is. I understand the. I understand the roof line or the line of the property is at two oh four and change.
And there's a tower in the middle and that's the only area that it's.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, that ordinance aside, if this was a one ninety point five, we are nowhere near the tallest building in the neighborhood. Like we could go, and to be, to, to give you some perspective, we were actually at two thirty and the Board of Architect made us take it up to two forty.
Yeah.
And elongate the tower. So we actually came in a little lower.
No, I understand that, it's just, but now you're coming in based on what we approved at.
But only for the two oh five. I, I didn't need that ordinance for the two thirty nine.
Right, but that's where I'm having a hard time. I, I can't, I'm not speaking for anybody else, any other members, I'm just voicing what I'm saying.
I, I understand.
You know, and it makes sense, the rental, all that is great, the park is amazing. Do you need to vacate the alley? I don't know if you do, that would be more for the Board of Architects' decision. You know, I like to know, my concern would be what benefit is the city getting or the residents getting for the additional twenty six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet? I do see that forty, for the forty three thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, they're getting a park. So I do see a benefit in that area. You live there and you specifically said yourself, you know, just as a resident, that would have been amazing to you. So I'm good with that.
But Mr. Chairman, I, I wouldn't underestimate the, the fact that they're doing a courtyard in the middle, they're doing really nice sidewalks, there, there are many benefits in addition to, to the park, I believe.
They, they are, I'm not saying.
A cynical answer is ad valorem.
I'm sorry?
A cynical answer is ad valorem because that is obviously, all square footage that we build is obviously taxed by the property appraiser, but an optimistic answer is a building with an alley running down the middle is not a great building. And I don't think that that is what, as, as you're walking down that sidewalk, you want cars. My girls are currently sixteen and fourteen, they were ten and seven when we moved here and they will not walk by an alley without saying alley because of all the blind alleys that you walk through alongside.
I don't disagree with you.
So that's, that's the optimistic answer that it provides for a better product to improve downtown Coral Gables, but it does. Every square foot that we build here will eventually get taxed and find its way back into, back into the, the county, county school and city.
I mean, to me, the screening is important for the garage.
Agreed.
And a really clear example to me is the screening that's being done for me over where the collection is doing the Jaguar on US One right next to the building we just discussed.
And that's one you like?
Well, it's, it's irrelevant whether I like it or not, but it doesn't look like it's a garage where they're going to keep cars.
No, but we're, we're looking at different examples, so if that's a recommendation, I'm happy to look.
It's a certain style, I'm not saying that'll fit yourself, I don't think it's, I don't think it's up to me or the board to tell you what style to do the screening at, I think it's more the Board of Architects and the city staff, but I would just encourage to really screen that so it doesn't look, you know, that blueprint doesn't look like a garage.
And that's a requirement of the code and the, the final design usually happens at the end of the process, however, the, the requirements, we, we're talking about them now.
Okay. Any?
Just a final, I'm going to talk about parking, I just want to make sure I understand and also for, for me to learn. You talked about reducing the unit count from one seventy four to the one fifties, maybe?
That's probably, yeah.
Would you be?
One, it, it's, it's, it's fluctuating every day.
Would you bring in the parking numbers down if you did or you, would you keep it? You still keep the numbers to the three eighty nine?
The parking, the parking is provided for up to what I'm asking.
To what now?
Up to what I'm asking for at a hundred and seventy four. So we are compliant with what we're asking for.
Keep in mind also that it gives more flexibility for future users.
I'm, I'm going there and that's what I'm saying to you, so you know, the Merritt Park Village has a surplus of parking, maybe doesn't do so much good over there, but here surplus parking would be helpful for redevelopment of the area. So are you providing maybe some surplus that may go back to the?
We may have it. I can't speak to that right now. In order to do that, and the only way that it even comes to mind, because obviously security in a building like this would be important, is to do a double gate system where, and it would be a retrofit later, that is not in the plan today. Is it something that could conceivably happen later if, if half the thing is empty? Sure, a double gate system with a security consultant, which I am not, but it can certainly be looked at later, but we will have the space. The garage does not get any smaller if we make the units bigger and make fewer of them.
And in those numbers, you're going to put the valet, so in those three hundred and nine unit spaces, you're going to valet those cars in that space?
Yes, as we do in our, our office building and our, and our apartment building now share a garage and when we had valet, it was all in the same, it was all in the same building.
And, and I also would think that they'd want to maintain those parking spaces based on the use on the ground floor, which would maybe require at some point greater parking in order to be able to get that certificate of use or that use for that business.
Yes, and, and because the city allows you to satisfy that with valet, it's, we, we, we have an interest in keeping those spaces available for valet. And there's some tandem spaces in the garage which are only good for valet.
Correct.
And like I said, we're way overparked. I think we're overparked, the numbers can bear me out, at what we're asking for, we are not going to build that many is according to our plans today. And I can tell you unequivocally, it doesn't change at all, the heights, we're putting the pool there, that's, that's the garage. And those are amenity decks, I mean, it's the garage.
Chip?
Yeah. The number of units is one seventy four, is that, is that what I understand?
The, the proposed number of units, I am saying, I don't think it says it anywhere in the application, I'm seeing it on the record, up to one hundred and seventy four.
How many could they build? How many units could they build?
Without this ordinance? If we didn't take advantage of the height on this.
On this site, just regular by code.
If it was a normal building at a hundred and ninety point five, I penciled it out at three hundred and thirteen.
How many?
Three thirteen.
Three thirteen.
Which would create a nightmare.
Oh, no, I agree, I mean, that's the reason I'm, you know.
That's what we penciled it out at, at a nine fifty normal distribution with studios, ones, twos and threes.
Without the ordinance, sorry.
Without the, at a one ninety point five, at one ninety point five standard, so Sofia just on a bigger lot.
So ten years from now, this could not be subdivided into additional units?
Not, not at two hundred and five feet, it can't.
The approval under the new code caps one hundred units per acre, which is the one seventy four.
Okay. So, so the last question I have is, because I'm a little confused, the sending site on the TDRs is where?
We do not have that established yet.
I'm sorry?
We don't have that locked down yet.
You don't?
No.
Okay, don't we have to have that approved before we approve TDR transfer? We have to know the sending site, don't we?
I think you have to know the. You might get the sending site in various different places.
That, so that's how it is? I mean, I don't know the, I don't know.
And the commission has approved it as a condition at least once prior to finding out the, the sending site, so it's been done before without knowing the, the sending sites.
I'm sorry, I totally didn't understand what you said.
Ideally, you know that sending site, yeah, ideally, and at least once it has been approved without knowing.
Okay. So we, we're allowed to do that?
I, I can only tell you what was said at the Historic Preservation Board where this question came up. I discussed this with the city attorney and if you read the code, where I, I know I need to get them and I know I need to get cement.
Okay.
I don't need to tell you where I'm getting it.
He has to follow the rules and he has to be.
Well, what I'd, what I'd like to do is actually ask this, the city attorney that's here with us, is it okay for us to approve this project without the sending sites?
I, I believe it is, but I'm going to confirm it, so you give me a little bit of time just to go through that.
And, and if I could just tell the city attorney through the chair, if, if he were to communicate with Assistant City Attorney, I, I don't remember Gus's name, he gave the Historic Preservation Board while sitting right over there, that exact legal advice. So I ask him to please confirm.
You're making a recommendation, you're not approving the project tonight.
But, say that again, Ramon?
The, the, this board does not approve projects, this board makes a recommendation to the commission.
But it's unusual, normally we do have a, a sending site, as Chip said, and it's, it's okay as long as the city attorney tells us, I'm, I'm good with it.
I, I'm happy, just because I happen to be the only one that was in the room that day, so I could just, Maryam through her assistant city attorney who was, who was advising the Historic Preservation Board, Donna Spain, coincidentally sitting exactly where you are, brought this up and we had a long conversation about it, the city attorney gave a legal opinion. I obviously got that legal opinion from them before walking into the room, so by all means, you know, I, I don't miss.
He is a member of the bar, so it's obviously, he, he can't make representations that are not true.
Of course, of course. I mean, sometimes there are mistakes made as to what is said that can be done and then it can't be done. I just want to make sure that, that's my only reason.
This was a very long part of the Historic Preservation Hearing.
I'm not saying he didn't say.
So I just, it was, it was abundantly clear, but I, I absolutely defer to Mr. Coller and, and Ms. Ramos and Gus, it's, it's been made clear, it's my onus and my risk to acquire them, to acquire the TDR certificate from a sending site, but once they are approved to be one, my project doesn't matter where they come from so long as they are valid when they get to me.
And, and, okay, and I'm not, that's not a hang up for me, I, I was just curious, I, because I tried to find it and I didn't see it, so. And then the last question I had, and I'm sorry, I had another page, on, on the art in public places, what, what public art or where are you putting that one percent or that, whatever that?
The art in public places, we have a couple, we will obviously go through the art in public places process. We have been in conversation with certain people about, does the city want us to donate that to the park? So we're waiting to speak to the commission on that when this goes forward, if they want us to put it on the building, we will. I have no problem saying that Armando Codina has often exceeded the minimum requirements. So while nothing is designed at the moment, because we don't know if it's going to go on the building or maybe in the park, in a truly public place, we will comply with whatever is approved by the commission.
Mr. Chairman, as far as the TDRs, you, you're not making a recommendation to the TDR process, however, you're looking at the project as a whole in terms of the FAR.
But we're, but we're looking at it based on the site plan that's provided to us normally.
So, so you don't, you don't have to take action at the TDR if you don't feel comfortable. However, the, the site plan is, is what it is and, and that's what the, the applicant has recommended, I mean, has represented.
But isn't the, isn't the site plan based on the TDR?
It is, and, and if they don't get it, it, it will be modified. And, and, and the issue is that when there's a modification of the site plan, it could be a major amendment or it could be a minor amendment, there's a process to deal with those issues. And if it's a major amendment, it goes by the commission.
And, and, and just to, if, if I may, because this is very important, this was very important to me coming in, TDRs are not abundant as people think.
Correct.
If this board were to tie me, I have some under contract, I can't identify who they are, but I also can't be locked into that because if I get locked into that, but without having them locked up, they're going to be like, oh, I was going to charge you a dollar square foot, it's a thousand dollars square foot, then I got to come back. What the purview of this board is, is to approve me as a receiving site. The Historic Preservation Board would approve a sending site, the member, the memorandum and the, the maintenance covenants would be, because, for example, and I'll tell you, and I'll tell you why this exactly plays out, one of the TDR, a block of TDRs that I have under contract is a property that has sold some of theirs. They're approved. They had, let's call it, they had ten square feet, they sold five. I could buy the other five. That, where they come from doesn't make me a better or worse receiving site. So I still got to go get them, I understand that. It's my risk, if I can't find them, I got them in there.
Cloudy had a question.
I had a quest, question for Mr. Trias, a, with experience comes knowledge and I'm definitely trying to gain knowledge here as, actually, both me and Mr. Buscello are new to the board and I apologize in advance for not knowing the terms so that I can fully understand what it is that we're discussing. Can you please clarify to me the sending site and the receiving site so that I understand what it is?
Yeah, what you're really discussing right now is that this, this building is going to receive up to four point three seven five in FAR from any TDRs that the applicant at some future date identifies. So you're looking at the receiving site, that, that's, that's the significant.
If, if I may correct, if I understand correctly, I think what she'd like for you to explain is the process. For example, the TDRs come from what type of properties and as the sending site, if I understand you, and just a, a quick synopsis of what it is, and then the receiving site can only be in what district, for example?
Let me, let me, let me try it again.
At thirty thousand square feet.
Let me try it again.
I'm sorry, height, sorry about that.
We have a process that, that is able to transfer square footage from one parcel to another. Now, that process is only for historic buildings. So there are some historic buildings that have extra development rights because let's say they're only one story and you could do a, a ten story building, for example. So the extra, the extra area can be transferred. And the issue is that it has to be transferred to an approved receiving site. So that, that's the difference, there's a sending side, which is a historic building, there's a receiving side, which is this, this building as proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Trias.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just going to ask one last question. If, if you drop it to a hundred and fifty units down the road or after you see your, whether it's a feasibility study or whatever study you do, does that drop the height at all?
No, the reason the units are getting, the units are numbering fewer is because the units are getting bigger.
Because they're getting combined.
Yeah, so like the top floor that I showed you was programmed to five units, there's a very real chance there's going to be one, so we didn't lose any, it's just.
And, and the one hundred and ninety point five that you could do as, as a right, correct? Is that what I understand?
Well, yes, with Med bonus level two.
With Med bonus levels, what number would they get to?
One ninety.
With the tower?
No, that's what they have, the, the tower can be up to a third of, of the height.
So at one ninety, what would the height of the tower be?
A third of two hundred and sixty six, so it would be about two hundred and fifty six feet.
Yeah, exactly.
Here we take, call it two hundred and fifty.
So you could be at two hundred and fifty feet with Mediterranean bonuses on this project?
Even though, even though the habitable space were fifteen feet lower.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and that's, that was in the code prior to any changes. So the, the only change is that the habitable went up another fifteen feet or so, but the, the upper limit remained the same.
And, and, and to be clear to anybody watching, that height didn't increase the FAR because that calculation is based on the lot size. We were very clear, we wanted the height for this product, for higher ceilings, because at a unit that's much larger, a lower ceiling, the geometry didn't work. So we're not getting more, more developable square feet. We could build the same amount of square feet, fifteen feet lower and three hundred units, and that just wasn't what we wanted to do, we wanted to introduce a new product, which required that.
Mr. Coll?
Just one, on the issue of the TDRs, the role of the Planning and Zoning Board is set forth in the code and your review is based on looking at the receiver site, not the sending site, but the receiver site. And the criteria, I can read it to if you'd like, I, I've actually read this to the board in the past when we've had these TDR issues, is the Planning and Zoning Board Review and Recommendation and City Commission Review and Approval by Resolution, the application satisfies all of the following. So you make a recommendation, A, applicable site plan review requirements per section fourteen dash two oh two general development review procedures and conditional use review requirements per section fourteen dash two oh three conditional uses, B, the extent to which the application is consistent with the zoning code and the city code otherwise applicable to subject property or properties including density, bulk, size, area and use, and the reasons why such departures are determined to be in the public interest. See the physical design of proposed site plan and the manner in which design makes use of the adequate provisions for public services, provides adequate control over particular traffic, provides for and protects designated common open areas and further the amenities of light and air recreation and vis, visual enjoyment. Indeed, yes.
Those are pages thirteen and fourteen of the staff report, by the way. Those are pages 13 and 14 of the staff report, by the way, so as part of the record.
Thank you.
And I'm glad that you had it in there.
Okay. Any other comments?
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second it.
Do we have five separate motions?
Yes, yes, sir, five.
We have to start on item E1 would be the first. Motion would be review and approval per staff recommendation.
I'll do a second.
That would be the motion.
The motion to approve.
Can we have a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? No? Call the roll, please.
Alex Buscello?
Yes.
Claudia Miro?
Yes.
Vinnie Torre?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
Yep.
AB Eisenstadt?
Based on the fact that you're telling me that at the 190.5, you would have been able to go higher on the tower, then I'm, yes.
Next item is E2.
Make a motion for approval of E2?
That would be in accordance with staff recommendations.
Correct.
Sorry, who made the motion? In a second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Claudia Miro?
Yes.
Vinnie Torre?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Alex Buscello?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes.
Item E3?
Make a motion for approval of item E3, the approval of a PAD.
Mr. Chairman, the, the condition of the park will have to be updated as presented by the applicant. That's the only change in the conditions that I can see.
Explain that, please.
The park is going to be a city park donated by the applicant, and the condition of approval doesn't say that. So, so we need to, we need to.
So the PAD requires the park to be transferred, or for the approval of the PAD?
Do we need to make that recommendation to you, or?
No, no, I, I'm just mentioning that that's what's gonna happen. I, I want you to be aware of that, of the fact that the recommendation that we have in the, in the staff report needs to be updated.
So can I, I'm sorry. In this case, I think staff has basically amended their recommendations to include the, that transfer. So when you, if you, if the motion is to approve in accordance with staff recommendations, it will include that modification as given orally here. So before I vote on that, let me just, you're donating it to the city.
Yes, sir.
Do you get a tax write-off for that? Or, because we're not a not-for-profit, are we? I mean, I'm just thinking there's another vehicle partnership in our city.
Honest to God, Mr. Withers, the park has been the number one driving force of this at certain, at staff and elected level. The, the city and the administration has asked for this, and if this is the public benefit that the city wants for our pad, we are happy to provide. It's not a tax.
A city park?
No, I understand all that. I'm just talking about the benefit they get from donating a park.
And, and those, that, we, we haven't finalized the, the discussions, and that's why I'm saying that we need to update the, the condition.
So, so I suggest instead of donating it to the city, some other verbiage that says that the city ends up with it eventually. There might be another vehicle in which the city can acquire it, which is, and I'm not a tax guy. All I know is Commissioner Kurt, I put partnership in place just so people would donate land to the city, because they could get a tax advantage.
The, the, the issue here would be, and I'm not, I'm not a huge tax guy either, but because we are, this is one site, and all the FAR will be over on the assemblage, this will be pretty valueless, other than, which is what made it such a great deal, that it's the one thing you guys wanted for. But it's something that we will absolutely look into, Mr. Withers. I have, I have a CFO, if he's watching, is gonna be like, you're damn right I'm not looking. So happy, happy that you brought it up.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a benefit to it, which is what you're saying. There's a benefit, meaning there's a dollar amount.
Sure, we get that, and, and the city gets 10,000 square feet in the middle of downtown. So, thank you very much.
So the motion is to approve E4, which is the, I'm sorry, E3, which is the approval of the PAD with conditions that the park be transferred to the city. That's my motion.
In a second.
We have, for Cloudy, a second. Any discussion? No? Call the roll, please.
Vinnie Torre?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Alex Buscello?
Yes.
Claudia Miro?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes.
Item E4?
I'll, I'll move the E4, which is the review and approval of the TDRs for this, for this site as a receiving site.
Second. We have a second. With staff recommendations?
Yes, sir. With staff recommendations.
Yes.
Any discussion? No? Call the roll, please.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Alex Buscello?
Yes.
Claudia Miro?
Yes.
Vinnie Torre?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes.
So I will move the last item, which is E5, which is the conditional, I'm sorry, the approval of the conditional use, mixed-use site plan pursuant to the zoning code.
May I add recommendation to look at the screening? Would this be the appropriate place?
Yes, sir. This is the time, yes, sir.
I accept.
With, with the additional screening?
Additional screening to be reviewed by staff.
For the parking.
Absolutely.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a second?
And that's in, that's in accordance with staff recommendations.
Yes. Thank you. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alex Buscello?
Yes.
Claudia Miro?
Yes.
Vinnie Torre?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes.
Thank you for your time this evening. I know it took a while, but thank you for the comments, and we will look into it. And thanks for the tax. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is E6. Mr. Coller?
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Can I ask a, a serious question?
Let's go ahead and read item E6 first, and that way we're into the next.
Item E6.
No, you were here. Welcome.
I'm sorry.
Item E6, in ordinance of the city commission of Carl Gables, Florida, providing for a tax amendment to the city of Carl Gables official zoning code by amending Article 1, General Provisions, Section 1-108, Transitional Rules, to clarify that allowed existing uses of property are permitted as a conditional use of property within the city prior to the effective date of the zoning code update. Ordinance number 20 dash, excuse me, ordinance number 2021-07 shall remain in effect as a permitted use of property or a conditional use of property upon the adoption of ordinance number 2021-07, providing for retroactive application, providing for severability repealer, codification and effective date. Item E6, public hearing.
Ramon, before you start.
Yes, sir.
Louis wanted to make a comment.
Did I hear correctly that one-third of a building height can be added as a ornamental architectural tower?
In the central business district, that's what the, yeah, that's what it says, the code. It's been there for a while, yeah.
Essentially, this building at, at 205, 6 inches could have added a tower of about 70 feet. It's a code, I don't understand. I'm not, hey, Ramon, I'm not blaming you.
I, I, I think, I think in theory, yes.
My, my, my questions are not to put you on the spot. You, you just happened to be here. And I, I'm sorry for my ignorance, but that seems way out of line. That's an architect.
Ornamental, I mean, the service part is what, 20 to 25 feet max, you think? I mean, you guys do this all the time.
Well, and, and normally, other municipalities have like, a, a 30-foot max, and, you know, and then there is an area for mechanical spaces, you know, so you can go up to about 30, 30% of your roof area and not higher than 25, 30, something for ornamental. I was just, and again, I, I feel embarrassed about my ignorance, but that's a huge, huge.
If you look at this, this spired and, and.
Billmore.
Not to them, which burned down, that was designed by, by Violet Le Duc in the 19th century.
I know.
Yes. You could do that, but I don't know if anybody's gonna do that in, in, in a typical building. So in theory, perhaps.
But my point is, you are absolutely correct in your theory that, whether somebody's gonna do it or not. But I, I think as long as we have some of this strange quirks in our, so many organs, and this is not a reflection on you, please, I just want to go on the record. I, I, I think the, the more time we have to spend here debating things, that, that we could probably save the time talking about something more important, if we could start correcting some of these quirks.
Well, what I would say to you, and I would say to anyone, every community has the code it wants to have. Now, when, when we started in the, in the update, I thought, I sincerely thought that there was a desire to simplify the code and make it, in, in many ways, the, the way that you're talking about. I don't think that anymore. Based on the, based on the discussion that we had with the public, based with the request that we've had through many, many meetings, that's, you know, we, we have the code that Carl Gables wants to have, and it's a very good code. It's just that it has some issues, and like any code in, in, in this world. So that's where we are. And to, to, to think that we could have an ideal code or a perfect code, that's just not realistic.
I mean, I guess the check and balance would be, the board of architects approves it.
Yes.
The city appeals that decision, and the commission ends up getting to vote on it.
Yeah, and, and.
And I'm not saying that's the best process.
And that's a process, but it, it seems like a wasteful of time process, right? So, and, and it's, again, it's not a reflection on you or the staff. You, you, you are right. You, you're basically reacting to all these forces around you, but I don't know. I feel that if I don't say anything as a member of the planning board, I, I just want to express my opinion.
If you look at the, at the Billmore, which I, I think that's what they were looking at, most of that tower is just decorative. That's what Merrick did. But I don't, I don't know if anybody's gonna do that again, you know? So.
All right. Let's continue.
Thank you for, thank you for the clarification.
Ramon, please, if you make your presentation on E6.
This is a, a recommendation from the city attorney's office for a transitional rule that anytime a city updates a zoning code, it's a good idea to deal about, to, to, to have some language that speaks to uses that are already there, that they can continue. So from my point of view, this is a very useful addition to the, to the code, and maybe the city attorney can explain it further.
This is basically a clarification, and we never intend to, when somebody has a right, that we take it away through a zoning code update. There's, there's a, there are statutes that create essentially problems for cities when they do that. And this basically clarifies that if you had, if you had the use at the time that the code was updated, you still have the use.
And there's a section already about transitional rules. This is just adding some language.
Is there anything right now in that? Is there anything going on right now that this affects?
I, I, I don't know of any active applications, no.
Just staff recommends approval.
I'll move it.
Second. Any, any comments from anybody? Any questions? No? Having heard none, call the roll, please.
Claudia Miro?
Yes.
Luis Revolta?
Yes.
Vinnie Torre?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Alex Buscello?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes. Louis, I'm glad you could participate on that one.
Oh, so am I.
The next item, please, E7.
In ordinance of the city of Carl Gables, Florida, providing for tax amendments to the city of Carl Gables official zoning code, Article 4, zoning districts, Section 2-100 residential districts, to increase the interior side setback of certain multifamily III, MF3 properties, providing for severability repealer, codification and for an effective date. Item E7, public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, this is a readily minor amendment that is sponsored by Commissioner Anderson. She requested a five-foot setback for townhomes on the side of the townhomes. Right now, that's not a requirement, except for historic, except when the building next to the townhome is a historic building. We're removing that, and just in any case, five-foot setback.
So are you saying, as long as the wall is attached between townhomes, there's obviously no setback required? So you're saying a five-foot setback would be on the last unit?
At the last.
Or on the first unit?
Yes.
And what happens if that falls on a street?
There's a 15-foot setback on the street.
Say that again, please.
15 feet setback.
Okay. So then it's only when it butts an adjacent property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I know this item very well. So I'll see if I can help it along. So the item is related to issues that relate to constructability, when you're basically having to stand on your neighbor's property to finish the bill. That's really what happens.
Can't hear you.
The, the issue is that with zero, zero setback, you have to stand on your neighbor's property to finish, to finish the wall.
Correct.
Stucco, paint, blah, all that. Plus stuff falls on your property, on the next door property, because there's zero. That, that's where this is about. So a couple of questions. What is the minimum, and I think I know the answer, but just ask you, what is the minimum for M3 townhouses? Is it two? I mean, you, if you have 25 feet, then you can't have a 25-foot buildable lot. You have 50-foot buildable lot. Can you do two units? Correct. You can.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
So if you have five feet on either side, the unit becomes 20 and 20. Garages are required to be 22. Does that mean we can only build one unit?
Well, the, I, I forgot to, to explain that we also include some language that says that the board of architects may recommend a variance to the requirement, and I think that that would be the case in, in very rare instances.
That's not a rare instance, though, is it?
Well, maybe.
A 50-foot lot that's.
I, I haven't seen two, two-unit projects.
There's one.
I mean, I think the smallest one I've seen is four.
There's one exists. I know it quite well.
Which one?
It's between Almeria Row and, and the condo, and that other, both Almeria.
And that's built?
It's owned by somebody that you know.
Well, I mean, somebody may be thinking about that, yes, but I, I don't know of any built projects.
So the, the, the fix there is to get the, the board of architects to let you reconsider? Is that?
To make a recommendation for a variance. I mean, the fix is a variance. In other words, if the setback is five feet, there's some hardship, so you apply for a variance, and then the, the board of adjustment will say yes or no.
But then isn't that sub, very subjective, as opposed to being in the code as to what has to be done?
Yeah. What, what I'm saying is that in cases where there's a hardship, for example, you cannot meet the, the minimum size for the parking garage or whatever, that could be seen as a hardship. So there may be some, some instances in which, in which there's a need for, for some relief. But as a standard procedure, I think it's a good idea to have that setback. And, and that's what the.
Yeah, and it's understood why it happens. But the other question for you is, so if you have, and I'm not sure there's how many of these blocks left, but if you have a street that has three, and then a gap, and then two and a gap, does that work well for the, the way townhouses are supposed to work? I mean.
No, it, it wouldn't work if, if you were to have too many five-foot setbacks, certainly.
You would have to, you'd have to, if you have a full city block and you wanted to do four projects, you'd have four gaps, three gaps.
Aren't, aren't you having an issue then with people that own 50-foot properties that bought it because they could do a twin home, and now after this, they can't do that?
I, no, nobody has approached me on that, but I.
Nobody has approached you, but there's, have you identified which properties qualify under this?
Well, MX3 properties, yes. I'm sorry, MF3.
But have you, have you gone through city records and identified how many properties you have that are 50-foot properties in there that fall under this?
I, I, I have not, no. This is a, this is something that has been sponsored by Commissioner Anderson.
I understand, but Vinnie brings up a very good point.
It's a good suggestion, and I understand why it's happened. It's, it's brought, it's brought for a good reason. But my question is, if both sides can agree, would there be any way to make it easier to, for these not to occur when they don't have to? I mean, I'm just saying is, and I know that they're trying to put a, a way to have that, but the ideal is that. I mean, I'm just saying is, and I know that they're trying to put a, a way to have that, but the ideal is that it shouldn't happen, but you may say that's the way it has to be, and I'm just looking for the.
I, of course, in Carl Gables, we're looking for quality, right? We're looking for the best design possible, so I think anytime we have simple rules like, oh, you have to have five feet no matter what, that's probably not a good idea. So, it's a good idea to have the, the rule, five feet, and then to have some process in, in which case there may be some, some, some hardship to waive it or to change it. I, I think that's my, my recommendation.
Is the language good enough to allow for that congeniality to happen and, and allow to figure out a?
Zoning is, is, is limited in its abilities, so I, I think that the, that's the best I could come up with. If, if you have some, some better way of phrasing it, I'll be happy to forward this to the commission.
Mr. Coller, let me ask you a question. Let's say person XYZ owns a property of, that's 50-foot within the area. What happens now when he says to you, I was able to build two homes? You know, a twin home. You've now taken that right away, yes. The city is gonna say, you can go before the Board of Architects, you can go ahead and get a variance, but you didn't have to do that before. You didn't have to go those steps.
Sir, you, you can still do two units. It's just that the, the garage is not a two-car garage, for example, but the two units are still possible.
Aren't you taking away something from that?
I don't know. Ultimately, you can still build the townhouse you wanna build. The question is, I guess, anytime you add a setback or add some type of distance, you're subtracting, so.
I, I guess my thing is, is a row home street, you're supposed to have one that was built over time next to the other, like any other old city has. And here, you may get to a point where you have these sort of duplexes sitting in the middle of a block, as, as opposed to looking at a row house continually. And again, I'm just trying to find a way for everybody to say, if we can agree on this, can you allow me to do this? And, and not have this long battle to the variant. Is, is there, is any way to accommodate where things can happen without, again, I don't know, variance, is that the only option here?
I don't know of any other way in, in our code than, than the variance. Once, once you establish a setback, the only way to change is, is through a variance.
You, you're, you're losing one unit, no matter what, because if you own five units and one has to have five feet less and you can't build the, you know, it, it kind of restricts a little bit of things.
I, I mean, for me, my concern is somebody that just owns one property that's 50 feet. I, I'm not looking so much at, you know, row house. I'm looking at that 50-foot property, and I don't know how many properties there are. I like the idea of the five feet, that doesn't, it's, it's good. But if I own a property, now you're telling me I can only do, let's assume that I could do a three-bedroom home, each one, but I can only do a one-car garage, which means now I have to stack cars going there, and I may have to start using street parking if it's available, because I don't wanna get up in the morning and have to move the car before my wife goes to work, or so. That creates a problem.
Yes, you're correct, yes.
And that's why I brought it up.
Who's, who's bringing this? Who's the sponsor of this change?
Commissioner Anderson.
There, there was a property where the neighbor and the developer could not agree on how to move this, and they got into difficulties, and it, it got to be a big, big problem. And that's because you have to actually step on the property next door.
So, for that, it makes sense. I don't disagree with that. I, I just don't know, how do you deal with a single property that you're now taking away the ability to have that? With a five-foot, if you start going on a 50-foot lot between your setbacks and everything, I mean, I would have liked to know how many properties are being identified or how many fall within this, just to get an idea. There may have been zero, but you've already said that there's at least one property. Any other comments? Alex?
Was this the first time this issue came up with this argument? This, this ordinance has been in place for how many years?
I don't know the exact, but, but certainly 20 years, something like that.
For 20 years, we had one problem. Could you explain to me?
I, I'm sorry, I actually, I believe I know. It's since 2000, 2004.
You know, the, the old saying is, if it's not broken, fix it, and it seems to be that one glitch just.
Look, there, there's a give and take to being on somebody's property, disturbing the neighbor, there's a cost. And usually, there's a bargaining that happens. I'm gonna do underground electrical service for you, or I'm gonna upgrade your electrical, I'm sorry, for the disturbance, and, and there's a workaround, usually. Sometimes it doesn't happen that way, and that's, that's where this became.
I have some examples of that.
Alex, I, I had a chance to work with Louis.
Ramon, you, you, I, I should let you point that out, but, you know, I, I built the fence for my backdoor neighbors who are both architects, and then I had to plant a whole bunch of planting, and I, I have experienced that, and frankly, I, I have painted painful lines for it, and so has Ramon.
Personally, in that way.
Yes, right, so it's, and, but, I don't know, I, I.
This, this is a, a, again, an issue that, that is a good idea, but it has problems. So, so the, the question is, do we have a process to deal with any kind of issues like that? I think we do, and that's the variance.
I'd like to, Alex, you have a comment?
Can you explain to me how you would lose a unit on, if you had the setbacks on a row? You had mentioned that earlier, just elaborate on that. The typical townhouse module is 25 feet, because we have usually lots of 50 feet, or, or the units in Carl Gables start at 25. It's a multiple of 25. Every block is a multiple of 25, and they're usually sold on units of 25, and you actually do fee simple replats to get them to be 25 feet, could be 24. Unless you have a really big block, when you start taking away five feet, you basically move that module into unworkable, and then it becomes kind of hard to work on a 23-foot module, because you just lost too many feet. That, that's where the multiplier becomes an issue. If, if you had a whole block, it, it doesn't matter, because you can space out five feet.
You're gonna do a pad anyway and get zero lot.
You could do a pad, so it becomes, when you're breaking it up, that the modules, modules lose too much square footage to be, to be relevant.
But the, the, the historic module before the automobile, it was 16 feet. 16 feet, it was.
16?
Yes. 16, or 18 when, when they.
US has houses at 15, so, you know, we could go back to that.
But it goes back to this, to what we were talking about, which is the individual unit owner that has a 50-foot lot.
Yes, sir. And, and if you believe this is a bad idea, certainly you can vote against it.
I don't have anything against, personally, me, I, you know, it's a good idea not to have to step on somebody else's property to finish. I like that. But I just would like to know, are there 35 properties, unit owners that have 50 feet or not?
So, let's say you and I are neighbors, and I have to give five, I have to go five feet away from you, but I wanna go to you, and I say, I'm willing to give you $100,000 if you let me do that, and we can agree on that. We're agreed. Now, I just gave you $100,000. I win, because I got that much more property, so it's a workaround. Is that something that's off the table?
No, no, it's not off the table.
It could be as simple as that.
Well, now you're changing, you're changing the code, aren't you?
No, we have to agree that the five feet is not, like you said, there's some exceptions to where we don't have to agree.
I, I, I think there should be, there should be room to make exceptions. I, I, I'm, I'm not convinced that a study of the existing landowners is really gonna be that revealing in the sense that land ownership changes all the time. We could do a study, and tomorrow it's gonna be something else, fine. I do think that there will be some issues, that you're correct, you know, certainly.
That's who I'm concerned about, that small owner.
So, so this doesn't deal with air-conditioned compressors or generators, it's just the wall of a house, right?
Yes, sir.
Because as, as it is, you can't put any of that in the five-foot setback or either way.
Usually, they place them on the roof, that I've seen.
And you know, then there's maybe other issues, and I don't know these. Then there's the fire code issues, how far can you be from the house with that hole? So, that wall may still be a, a very bland wall.
It's going to be, no, it's going to be, yeah.
So, it's a wall of nothing, five feet from the other person's property, but, so again.
I mean, Vinnie, going back to what you say, if there's a workaround, single-family home, I've got, let's say, a 10-foot setback at the rear, wherever it is. Would I then be able to go to my neighbor and say, you know what, I'm gonna do your electrical if I can have a zero setback, so I can make my structure bigger and so forth?
No, but you're, you're making a point where you're reversing what, what was already their code. Here, the code was already at zero, and we're trying to take away something that was already by there. So, I mean, there wasn't anything wrong with it, except there's an issue, which is understandable, that there could be a conflict where two people just can't agree on that. So, I mean, I'm just, again, not, I like the issue, I mean, I like the solution. I just wanna make sure that if some people can agree to reverse back to the zero, it's, it's not the end of the world here to make it so complicated. And if variance is the solution, Ramon, then maybe that's the only way around it, you know?
I don't know of any other solution with the code that we have.
Any other discussion? No? Everybody like to make a motion?
I'll move it.
Has this?
Has this?
Anybody second?
I'll second.
We have a second? Any other discussion? Now, call the roll, please.
Luis Revolta?
No.
Vinnie Torre?
No.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Alex Buscello?
No.
Claudia Miro?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
No, and for the reason that I just don't know how many properties are out there for that single owner.
So, the motion failed for two.
I think we need a reverse motion then, because basically, the person that approved, and that failed. So, we need a, a motion to recommend denial.
I'll move to recommend denial.
We have a motion to recommend denial. Alex, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Vinnie seconds? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vinnie Torre?
No, I mean, yes.
Chip Withers?
Yes, I mean, no, I mean, I mean, no. He's trying to confuse you, you know that.
No, that's.
That's all, that's Vinnie, Vinnie had his five. No, you're opposed to the motion? I'm opposed to the motion, I'm voting no.
Alex Buscello?
Yes.
Claudia Miro?
No.
Luis Revolta?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes, for the same reason as before.
Thank you very much.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Was there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for coming.